Everybody's saying, "Sorry about the glare."
Hey, I got enough of that up top myself.
Good morning. Who do we have on the phone?
Brooks here.
Good morning, Brooke.
Good morning, Commissioner David Smith.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge your allegiance before we convene our commission meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we meet in new day with many thanks to the blessings you have bestowed. Lord, we have witnessed the vibrant beauty of your creation with the exceptional fall we had experienced in our valley. May the farmers' harvest be a bountiful one throughout the region. Father, we ask you to guide our county, state, nation, or next week as we vote for our leaders. May we respect others' opinions without retaliation or hate. The mentality of wanting to cancel ruined one's life because they think differently is destructive and full of evil. We thank you that we live in a country where we have the freedom to choose our leaders. We pray that these leaders will not fall under limited knowledge but seek guidance from you, Father. We pray that we will have ears that will listen and address those that are in need. We pray that our leaders will think independently but work together for the common good. Lastly, may we do as you instruct us in your word to pray for our leaders daily. Father, we'll discuss a topic today regarding the revenue for local firefighters and emergency services. Lord, we thank you for these dedicated men and women that lead their families at night, weekends, and holidays to help their fellow residents from harm. They do with a sense of service and love for their community. They are the best of the best in our neighborhoods. They drop everything without being compensated. May you bless them for their service as they labor out of love. We are thankful that we believe in servant of God. Here's our every thought. We ask you for continued guidance in these things. We humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I believe in justice through the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. At this time, we will convene our commission's public meeting. We will ask for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So Kerry, any public comment on agenda items only at this time? Any online?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on.
Okay, moving on to 2.9 service order. We're going to acknowledge Gary Fox, the county printer, for his 20 years of service. Kerry?
Morning, Gary.
Morning, commissioners. Gary started in a print shop in 2002 as the assistant printer. In 2014, our printer retired, and Gary was promoted to the county printer. Since then, Gary's made some great improvements in the services provided by the print shop. For example, he introduced multi-platforms, and we started printing customized envelopes in-house. When we print materials internally, we save money on the product itself, as well as reduce waste by printing required or custom quantities. Rather than going out to a print shop and printing 500 envelopes, we provide 200 for whatever's required. Within the last few years, we started printing election day ballots in our print shop. This provides our organization with a tremendous level of flexibility to pivot and adjust as last-minute changes come from courts and the state, not to mention the huge cost savings that we do there. Gary has adapted our practices to newer equipment and has improvements made in that equipment over the years. He goes above and beyond trying to save money where he can. He has taken the, his new assistant, Taylor, under his wing and is passing down his knowledge and experience to the next generation. Gary also works daily with numerous county employees and all other, or for all their print shop needs. He is very passionate and conscientious about his work, and it shows on a daily basis. On behalf of our management team and all county employees, we'd like to thank Gary for his work that he does and wish him continued success over the next few years.
Okay, thank you.
Tell the public what you feel.
Can you stop the microphone, please? Thank you.
I really didn't prepare to say anything, but thank you, Jerry. And it's been a long road for me. I've enjoyed it, learned a lot of new things. I learned that you've got to keep trying when you get through rough times, and you've got to have the will to keep going and just keep going. And it's a lot of good people here in Lycan County to work with. I can say that, too. We work together, and that really makes us strong force here in Lycan County. I just want to thank everybody.
Jerry, don't leave yet.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, you truly are one of the folks who works behind the scenes. And the public doesn't see you. Public doesn't know about you except on a day like today. But it's all the stuff you do when they go to vote, when they get a letter for jury duty, when they're sending in invoices or getting paid as a vendor. That's work coming out of your office and your print shop. And it's not a huge print shop. We've done a tour down there, and you've managed to put together a real high-tech machine down there in a limited amount of space. So we thank you for that. And if I'm wrong on that, correct me, but if I recall, it's not, it's not a...
It's not, it's not huge.
It's not huge, but it has all the tools, and you know how to use them. And some of them are very complicated machines. So we thank you for that. And, you know, it's 20 years, but I'm sure you'll be here at least another 10. So we welcome you, and we look forward to that because we need you, and the public needs you, and the public thanks you.
Thank you.
Jerry, it's been an honor to know you for the 20 years. Pleasure to know you. And you do work behind the scenes, and you save the residents of this county thousands of dollars, thousands, from your service, what you provide. And you do it without flaw. There's no mistakes. I've never heard people say, "There's mistakes from the print shop." So you do a fantastic job. You always have a smile on your face when I see it, and your Yankee hat on. And I know it was rough playoffs, but we won't talk about that.
Okay.
But it's a pleasure to have you here, and we hope many more years of success to you. And we value you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to take about five minutes, so you can get the award. But, yeah, 20 years ago, I mean, just think about the eyes of senior high school.
Yeah. You don't do well math, do you?
So, yeah, when you walk over to the print shop, you see how it touches every department in the county. And you're not in the most ideal spot, you know, as far as the building, but you never complain. And I hear that we are going to make a move over to the Third Street Plaza, hopefully that you get the space that you need here and get a little bit more organized, not because of you, but because of us and the limited space that you have there. So we're looking forward to that move and hoping that it gives you, not that you don't have a bad attitude, but that you have a bad attitude, but it will improve for sure. I want to thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's going up to get the award.
Would any of your coworkers like to say something?
Yeah.
It's, when we see coworkers show up for these, it's out of respect for the employee. And you can see everybody here. They respect you so much, and they value you and what you bring to the county. And that's one thing, when you do retire, you know, you don't really miss the job, but you sure miss the people you work with, because it's like a family here.
Yep, it is.
It truly is. And, you know, they support each other and help each other. And that's what's, that's the beautiful thing about working for the county. And we see that with retirees is when they go to retiree lunches, they get to see each other again and smile and reminisce about the good times and the fun they had while they were accomplishing a mission. Would you like to get a picture with you?
Sure.
And any staff come up and get a picture with them, too, please? And we're not putting you on the spot if you want to, but we appreciate it. I told them I wish we could give Yankee tickets, but we can't.
I'd like to say it's turning sideways. He's going to say it's...
Kneel down. Chris, you look like an old Lily color. Mark, I don't know about that glow.
Smile. One more. Smile. I had to do that a lot.
All right, moving on to information item. Maya, page for food.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
That time of the year again where we're moving forward to 2023, so we're going out to bid for food products.
It's for the prison, right?
For the prison and for your lease. We do it on a quarterly basis. So it takes about, you almost have to do it two months in advance because of the nature of how many products there are and, you know, to secure the best price at the time, too.
Absolutely. How many times a year do we do that, Maya?
Four times a year.
Four times a year.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure there's going to be an increase with the price of food.
No doubt. Quite honestly, how the contracts I've started doing since COVID is that I do it on a weekly quote basis, and we just try to lock in on a weekly basis based off of what our need is. It's been more demanding, but it's been working. I foresee that being maybe the norm, probably at least for the next year or so, especially with inflation hitting as bad as it is on food. It's going to, you know, add an extra layer, unfortunately, I think, to the process.
And now we have a shortage of diesel fuel, which is going to increase the cost of the...
Yes. We had a discussion on that earlier in the week, and we're starting to plan now as a worst-case scenario.
And now drive up the cost even more in the pressure stores.
Oh, sure. Yeah, everywhere. I mean, it's going to hit, you know, here and in our home pockets as well, so.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports. Caitlin.
Morning, Caitlin.
No pressure.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification is a revision of invoices that were due through November 9, 2022, that were paid on November 1, 2022, in the amount of $907,681.60. The breakdown is as follows. 55.56% is coming from the general fund at $504,342.82. 33.86% is coming from grants and other sources at $307,322.52. And 10.58% is coming from RMS at $96,016.26.
Okay, any questions for...
I want to thank you for reading all those numbers, because we have people watching who may not have a copy of this in front of them. So we appreciate you giving them that information.
Okay, got a motion?
And another thing that we appreciate is we have basically a brand-new staff in fiscal payable, county payable, receivables. And it's been some trying times, and we want to thank you for putting in the effort. I see you people here at 7 o'clock in the morning. I see you people here at 6 o'clock at night. And you're doing your best to do the county's work, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, the entire staff is, step up the plate. We can really stand on a very difficult situation. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
The government accounting isn't like...
It's so fun.
Thanks, Kay.
I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So Kerry, at this time, we'll recess the commissioners' public meeting for the Board of Assessments' revisions, and we'll convene the Board of Assessments' revisions at this time. Good morning, Brooke.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here seeking your approval to certify the tax rules for 2023. We have 51,997 taxable parcels with an assessment of $5,765,256,341. We have 2,062 exempt parcels with an assessment of $1,486,600,600, sorry, let me go back and read that again, $1,486,31,590, for total parcels of $54,059, with an assessment
Okay.
Brooke, do you know offhand how the number of exempt parcels compares to last year or five years ago, or do you have any, you may not have it off the top of your head, but...
Oh, I do.
Oh, do you? Look at that.
Let's go back to 2019.
Okay.
There was 51,955 taxable parcels.
Okay.
So it has grown. Exempt parcels, there was 2011.
2011 exempt in 2019.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's grown also.
Yeah. But if you look at 2022 from last year, there was 51,977 taxable parcels. And then there was 2,058 exempt parcels.
Okay.
I want to put this in perspective, and why we have to take care of business at home. When you take a look at $5,765,256,341, think about that. Just think of all the properties, all the land in Lycan County. And our federal government sits there and gets billions and billions and billions away. You know, $50 billion to Ukraine. I'm not arguing that. But with a stroke of the hand, you know, that is a lot of money. And I think our federal government, I'm not talking parties, everybody's, everybody's the same. We have to start paying attention, and so I don't know how you can comprehend what that means, $50 billion means. And here, we have parcels that, you know, a billion dollars is a tax exempt. And we're looking at the economy right now, and everybody's fearful. We are. We're blessed to live here, but our belts better start to tighten up some. So just wanted to give a perspective of that. That's just one little, one little thing.
Okay, any other comments?
I want to just tell you, just doing a little math here. So it looks like the non-exempt parcels grew at a rate of 2.53% from 2019 to 2023.
Yes.
I'm sorry. The exempt parcels grew at a rate of 2.53%. The non-exempt, the ones that are taxable, I shouldn't call them that, the taxable parcels only grew at a rate of .08, which is less than 1%. So when you compare those numbers, the exempt parcels that we are, that are not taxable grew at almost four or five times the rate of the taxable parcels. And that is something that we have to pay attention to also, because, and that's, that's something where we have to find a solution at, at all levels, C cap, the state. So we increased our taxable parcels at .08%. Thanks very much, Brooke.
Yeah, Brooke, I appreciate you doing this for us, because, you know, then we can break it down. She hasn't broken down in county municipalities. So it is interesting taking a look at this chart.
Well, I will email you the five-year history with the certified tax rule. Do you guys see how that...
That'd be helpful.
That would be nice, and we'll pass it under the paper.
Yeah, absolutely. Hey, Brooke, before I adjourn the Board of Assessments, could you please stay on the line until the end? Under Commissioner comments, I'm going to address something that if you have any comments on at that point, I would invite you to.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Great, thank you. So at this time, we'll adjourn the Board of Assessments' revisions, and we'll reconvene the commissioners' public meeting at this time. Personnel actions. Ally?
Do we need to take any action to certify the parcels?
I know. I was going to say you need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. I'll move to approve and certify the tax parcels for 2023 as presented...
Let me reconvene the assessment boards before they... Go ahead.
Okay. I'll move to approve the Board of Assessment tax rules for 2023 provided by the director.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So Kerry, thank you. Now, at this time, we'll adjourn the Board of Assessments. We'll convene Mr. Parkman.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I am seeking approval for the following personnel actions that are listed here. The first one will be Nicole Stroop for the prison, coming as a CO1 relief for a full-time replacement at $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period with an anticipated start date of 11/14. Next one is for the pre-release center, Katie Shay for a resident supervisor one position. It is a full-time replacement for 17, 18 per hour, 80 hours per pay period with an anticipated start date of November 14. Next, for the prison, Tim Taylor is coming as a part-time correctional officer for the new relief position at $20 per hour, will not exceed 1,000 hours, and anticipated to start on November 15. For the pre-release center, Akeem Allow is joining us as a resident supervisor one, full-time replacement position, 17, 18 per hour, 80 hours per pay period with an anticipated start date of November 14. For the pre-release center again is Tyron Fisher, joining us as a resident supervisor one position, full-time replacement, 17, 18 per hour, 80 hours per pay period with an anticipated start date of November 14. And lastly, we have Carol Joe Barty joining us for the courts as a tip staff as a part-time replacement position for 10,43 per hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours, anticipated start date of December 5.
Okay, we've got a motion acceptance.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments on the... All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And Ally, how are we doing with the prison, with the recruitment?
We're good. We've actually seen an influx in applicants for the part-time positions that we have. And for full-time, we've seen, I believe, and don't quote me, this isn't the exact number, but 20 applicants over the last 26 days. So that's pretty good, including weekend traffic, which we usually don't see for our applicants.
Good. And we're getting applicants for the part-time, too?
Yep.
Great. That's good news.
Yeah.
We're trying to get relief for those...
Yep.
Positions and staff that's been working and dedicated.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. At this time, we'll recess the commissioners' public meeting for the salary board and convene the salary board.
I am seeking approval for the following salary board actions. For the prison, we would reclassify the nurse supervisor position from a pay grade 10 to a pay grade 12 due to market adjustment.
Okay. Got a motion? We have a tour with... Just walked in?
Just got... I'll move.
What's that?
We're discussing, the salary board's discussing the adjustment. You want to state it again? Or Ally?
Sure. Move to vote to approve for the following salary board actions. For the prison, reclassification for the nurse supervisor position from a pay grade 10 to a pay grade 12 due to market adjustment.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Can I say something?
Yes, absolutely. Come on up. Yes, absolutely. Come on up. Maureen?
Maureen. Um, I just wanted to reiterate on this that I think it's great that we're starting to adjust and continuing to adjust. But I would just reiterate that we're doing it a little bit at a time, and I know there's cost issues. But I feel that it's important to bring this up when these happen for the rest of the employees as well.
Absolutely. And we're in the tail end of the compensation study that we are, been discussing weekly. And, um, we have been given the final numbers on that, and the three Commissioners are discussing that and how we're going to implement that and vote on that in the near future.
Well, that won't handle everything.
That won't handle everything, but it'll start to adjust it. It's the start of it.
But I would vote no on that.
No, I would, I'd just like to make a, just a point of clarification on this particular action. Uh, the no nurse supervisor position was missed when we took care of the LPN market rate.
I figured that might have been the case.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the other thing, just to, it isn't so much that we try, that we're trying to go slowly. And I'm not saying that's what you were applying, but there's a massive amount of work that has to be done behind each one of these. So, whether it's, you know, finding out and calculating market adjustments or more complicated issues of how many years' experience people have, where they stand. So, a lot of it is that we have a HR department that's trying to do all the normal stuff it does. Open enrollment, dealing with people's issues, recruitment, interviewing, hiring, firing. And then on top of it, they're trying to do it. So, some of it is that they're, they're trying to do the best they can.
I do understand that.
Okay.
I would just go back to that we stopped using a pay scale that was deemed to be too expensive. And then we waited ten years to get to this point. So, it's on their shoulders, but it's work that could have been done even if it was incremental over those ten years, whereas now it seems like it has become more of an emergency from a staffing issue, from a retention issue, those types of things. So, that's why I feel that I need to bring it up.
You're talking about the step structure. The, I, it was before I was here, I think, you're talking.
It was. That was stopped. And then, but we waited so long, it, we fell out of market competition for salaries, even though as county government, we're not always at the market because we have other things to offer. It is public service, et cetera, et cetera. We've talked about all of that before.
Well, that's a good point, and we have to figure out a way to keep ourselves within a market.
I don't think it's a good point.
Well, no, 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 no.
We weren't out of, we were not out of range with other counties and other states.
Uh, well, that's not what I'm saying. What I mean is...
Well, that's what she said.
No, that's why I said market. I didn't mean, I, I mean, we're talking about it on here.
You're talking about pay.
I am.
And our pay was fine in comparison to everybody else's pay within our, our class counties. And even up to a fourth class county, okay, our pay were very comparable, and in some cases, more. Okay, the, the market rate has to do with what's happened since COVID. And, and where we're seeing, you know, lack of, of employees wanting to take a job, the price of the inflation, and so on. That's the market adjustment we're trying to make right now.
Yeah, and what I was going to simply say is that we're trying to find a mechanism going forward to both deal with current people. So, like, someone comes with five years' experience right now in a particular position in the planning department. We hire them at the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't make any sense. And so, we've been trying to put together a policy that will actually allow us to bring that person in with the five years' experience and put them on the salary structure where they would belong. But to do that, we have to make sure they're not coming in and working along someone who's been here for five years, who's also, or for seven years. Who's, and so, we're, we're working on that. That's, that's the point I want to make. And the Commissioner has his point, as he was here before me, so I, I don't know what, what that, that's fine. But I'm just trying to say to you and to the employees that we are trying to do something so that we can both deal with the structural problem we have. And then going forward, from time to time, we will deal with market adjustment. In other words, not every job and every position will require a market adjustment every year because it ebbs and flows. There was a time when there were lots of RNs around. You know, right now, the competition for RNs and LPNs happens to be very, very high. The same thing with other positions, whether it's operating at the landfill or whether it's some other. So, we're trying to do that. That's all I wanted to say either.
And I think, I think the oversight was when steps structure was stopped, there was nothing put in place as a alternative.
Right.
And it has produced, over the last decade, a lot of inconsistencies where you have staff making more than supervisors and those situations have evolved. And then you have a, um, a narrowing of the pay scale where a supervisor might only be making a thousand, two thousand dollars more than maybe a employee with a lot less experience. So, what Jessica has worked on, um, with Ally, which would cost the county probably three to five hundred thousand dollars if we would go out and have it done out, out of house.
Yeah.
They have worked hours on this problem. Uh, they have brought us a, a good solution that, um, I think is a fair solution. It starts to address it. And then what we'll do is if we adopt that and decide on that, then we can, again, take little steps each year to address other issues. But we won't be able to address everything immediately.
I understand.
But we'll be able to address a good part of it immediately.
And when, and what's going on right now, just so that we're, we're upfront, uh, and we're not behind closed doors, uh, is we recognize that, uh, our planning department and our IT department, uh, will be the next. And, and, uh, this compensation study is, has to be implemented. And then, uh, we'll be working on, uh, clerks. So, it's not that this isn't a topic of conversation every single day. It is. We're, we're working on this every single day. And, but there's a lot of work and, and I know Scott didn't mean hours, he, he meant months.
Sure.
So, they've been working on this for months.
It's, it's, it's been very hard on them. And at the same time, we don't want to do this, we, we should do this when we do a new budget. Because, you know, if you're going to put a, this is going to cost money, you don't want to do it in the middle of the year. So, now's the time as we get ready and discuss a new budget.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the things we're trying to look forward in the future is that if there are reclassifications that need to be done, they'd be done at budget time, which is what the Commissioner was talking about. Instead of all year long.
Right.
We spend a huge amount of time, and oftentimes, it comes on an emergency. It's like, oh, we got to do this now, right, because there's a crisis. And, and that's not a good way to run, to run a railroad. The thing is this, and, and I just want to, I, I wasn't here when it was eliminated, but here was the problem. The prior pay structure raises were in the range of, I think, about eight and a half percent a year, right? Because the step was about...
Five, five to five and a half.
Five to five and a half?
They were, they were actually four and a half. In between, each step was four and a half.
In between was four and a half, but then there was also on top of that, people would get a cost of living?
Bonus.
A bonus or cost of living or whatever, right? So, if you take four and a half and you, whatever it is, it's money, right? Whether you call it a COLA, whether you call it a wage increase, whether you call it a step between grades, it's money. So, the, the, the combination of the four and a half plus probably, what, two?
Well, it was, it wasn't four and a half. It, those steps were built as a year out. And then after, I think, a couple of years, it was every two years. But the, the thing about it, at that time, that's what, um, we saw was going on in contracts, teachers' contracts, police contracts. And we're the Commissioners at the time saw that to bring the salaries up to where they need to be on a professional level, they should be what they were. Now, what then happened was you saw, you go the other direction where the cost of living started becoming two, two and a half percent. So, it had to be, I agree with the Commissioner, it had to be adjusted, but there had to be something in place, and nothing was put in place.
Well, here's what I want to just point out to you. In math, there's a rule of seventy-two, right? You invest money at a certain interest rate, that money doubles. Well, that applies to other things, right? If you're, if you're paying a wage increase. So, in, on the rule of seventy-two, if you're going up even six percent a year, your payroll doubles in twelve years.
Well, and it affects your retirement too, don't forget.
It affects your retirement and how much you put in. But just the, the payroll doubling in twelve years. Now, here's the other thing that was a real problem. Between twenty-ten and, I forget, twenty-fifteen, we added fifty new employees. Fifty new employees added millions and millions of dollars to the payroll. And so, those two factors, you know, the first factor, uh, the prior, the board prior to me, Commissioner Missair and the others, tried to get that under control by eliminating the steps.
I understand.
We all made, in the last term, we made a push to eliminate, to reduce the number of people through attrition by cross-training people, getting people to cross-train, all in an effort to try to get it, to get it under control. I mean, I think that people, if we can work towards a workforce that's highly skilled, able to cross-train, and compensate them higher for that ability, that's probably a smarter approach than having massive number of employees who can't do anyone else's job, but, and then therefore, we have to try to keep the wages down.
Right.
Right?
I, and I realize all of that. It's just a matter of we had a structure, it went away, and it's taken too long to get back to a structure. That's the point.
Totally agree.
And we're trying to do that. We're trying to do it.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. It's always good to discuss these things. It's good for the public to try to understand also the challenges that are facing.
So, the vote is three to one, Carrie. At this time, we'll...
We have, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have one more.
So, for the Salary Board, for the prison, um, Kim Foreman would be reclassified to a pay grade twelve. Um, for the nurse supervisor position, moving to the pay grade twelve.
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So, Carrie, thank you.
I think we want to thank Kim for her outstanding, uh, work there at the prison right now. I mean, she, she's putting in a lot of extra time.
And look, to that last conversation, we have, employees have been very patient. They really have. And, and, uh, we appreciate that. We've lost some employees. We've lost some because they've gone to the state or they've gone other places where they're making more money. And, and we don't want to lose more. And so, we're hoping to get that compensation practice policy up for a vote probably within the next two weeks.
Yeah, I would say.
And that's going to address our current employees. It's going to, it's, it's going to enable us to look at someone and say, you've got X number of years' experience, you have a bachelor's degree, you have a certification in heavy equipment, whatever it is, and we're going to be able to give, adjust their compensation based on that.
And we have to vote on it because if we're going to adopt, it has to be in next year's budget.
Right.
And you're working on next year's budget figures.
Right.
Okay, one more. Yep.
Next, we have the Commissioner's request to add a full-time procurement and grant officer position, and that would be in a pay grade eight.
Okay, we have Maya here this morning. Would you like to make any comments?
Um, other than it's just really, yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, from my perspective, you know, when I first started here, um, you know, I don't think we're where we're at now. And with the ARPA funds, the COVID funds, um, you know, I think I operated under, you know, staff for a very long time. And now I can just no longer do it with the magnitude of work that's coming through my office. And, uh, so I appreciate this, and I'm glad that you guys took the opportunity to look at my office and, uh, reevaluated to give me this person because it's greatly needed. And it'll take the load off and it'll assist with, um, the necessary cross-training. You know, I've said this several times to you, you know, if I just get hit by the milk truck tomorrow, you know, I'm concerned. Yeah, I don't want that.
Just be returned.
I'm alw- I was always concerned about the continuity of operations. And, uh, so this will afford me to be able to do that and to make sure that we get proper cross-training to, you know, set the county up for success should, um, someone move on.
I was listening to some campaign speeches, uh, by both parties. And they recognize the amount of money the federal government is handing out. And one of the things that they're talking about right now is accountability. And so, they, they want records. They're going to demand records, okay? And, uh, when we're talking about the money that we receive just in ARPA funds and in the CARES funds, and we're just a small piece of the pie, and you only have a couple of people with that to, uh, really evaluate it, monitor it, and, and request it, right? It's, uh, something long overdue.
I mean, right now, your staff is, including you, is two and a half people.
That's correct, and both of those people are fairly new.
Yep. And you're handling millions and millions of dollars of the grants. And then on top of that, you've dealt with COVID monies, ten point two million, and now twenty-two million dollars worth of ARPA monies.
Yep.
And, um...
You know, then the purchasing side in itself, you know, I'm tasked with every dollar that's spent, looking at that, making sure for legal compliance. And that's over a hundred million dollars, you know? And I will tell you now, that, you know, is a big, big thing too, because, you know, they go hand in hand. You know, when you're monitoring grants, then you're spending it. So, then it comes on the other side of things. So, um, there's just lots of, you know, procurement laws and regulations and compliance issues on both ends that require, you know, a lot of time and effort. And, you know, I'm, no, Matt, no, nothing's easy. Um, we're dealing with an issue right now, just, you know, something simple as, you know, ballistic shields, trying to get that done. Um, unfortunately, you know, procurement code has not been updated to reflect the times, and that is the challenge. Um, it's something that I've advocated for in my, um, you know, conference area with our professionals, um, other procurement professionals. It's something we're trying to work, but ultimately, again, it's up to legislation and our legislators to make those changes.
You know, the, uh, the, the COVID emergency declaration may have, uh, expired. But the effects haven't changed. In fact, uh, they've been exacerbated by a whole bunch of other, other factors. And so, some of the flexibility that, uh, we had under the declaration, uh, we no longer have. But yet, the prices are volatile, and they continue to, uh, rise sometimes on an hourly level. And it's very difficult for mine or staff to do their job.
It requires a lot of unique thinking, you know?
You know, two points on this. One that you mentioned. In the next year, and whoever's the next Board of Commissioners, we have to work on developing depth of leadership. And we're all aware of it, and it isn't that we're not concerned about it. It's, it's a question of, um, you know, all the things that have gone on, COVID and everything else. But we really need to not have any departments where if the leadership has to leave or chooses to leave, then we can't run the organization. And, uh, we've probably had a learning experience this year with, with some of the departments where that happened. So, that's something that I think all three of us are thinking about next year and also, um, in, in the next Board needs to think about it. The other thing about your, this position is that, as Commissioner Missair mentioned, there's probably twenty-eight, thirty million dollars that we've gotten, just that we never would have had before. Twenty-two from ARPA. I forget how much the COVID was.
Ten point two.
Ten point two.
Ten point two. So, there, right there, you're looking at thirty-two million that we have to process. Well, we don't want to just process it in a way that doesn't leverage it. We want to process it in a way that ties in with other grant opportunities. And then separate from that is all the money, for example, broadband. This state got how much in broadband? Two hundred and fifty million?
Yeah, yeah.
Two hundred and fifty million. And is that, Jenny, do you know off the top of your head if that's correct?
I do not. You're in a John Mike.
Yeah, I don't know what this, I don't know what the state got.
It's a huge amount of money, and we need to make sure we're in a position to know where the grants are and how to get them and how to bring that money back to, to build out our county, right? Because that's where the future is.
Matt, that's a good point to make there because, uh, you know, we have a limited tactics. And, and the way communities grow and get things accomplished is locating these grants. And we have department heads such as Hutch who goes out and finds these things, works with Maya, and gets those things accomplished, and then those things get purchased, and then makes our county a better community.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all a team effort. I mean, it really is. And that's the thing, you know, there's so much planning that goes in to grants. I mean, hence why planning is my biggest, you know, department. Um, it takes a village really to, to get the job done. I mean, we all have very important roles in each area that we do. But, um, without one person not being available because of something else, it's, it puts things on the back burner. I want to make sure that if I'm getting pulled in a different direction, that someone can fill my shoes to keep operations moving for them or any other department that needs to keep moving operationally.
If you locate those grants, the courts locate those grants, the department heads locate those grants. Like you said, they work together as a team to get them accomplished and bring those monies to Lycan County. Because if, if we don't go after them, somebody else is going to get them.
That's exactly right.
And they're going to make their communities better.
Mm-hmm.
But what's important, though, to understand is if you don't follow the rules.
You don't get it again.
Oh, oh, no, you can get it. Other big, they can say, oh, well, you did this, this way. You pay it back.
Oh, absolutely.
We watched the county in Pennsylvania, I won't mention it, but it was a ten million dollar building.
Yes.
Yep.
And they didn't do it right.
No, I mean...
And not maliciously, they...
Right. It's just you got to make sure you know what you're doing.
They have to pay it back.
We almost went down the same road.
I know.
And we caught it, so now we're, we're doing the proper paperwork so that when we get to selling part of the golf course, we've done the transaction.
Absolutely. I mean, there's so many contingencies on, between grants and purchasing that you have to really look at. And, you know, each situation's unique, and that's, you know, the complexity of the job.
You know, Commissioners, I think, uh, everybody's aware of the increased workload due to...
You know, Commissioners, I think everybody's aware of the increased workload due to the recent federal revenues that have come in through CARES and ARPA. But, you know, on a normal, non-COVID revenue year, you know, we, we have roughly a hundred and ten million dollar budget, and of that, somewhere around thirty-six, thirty-seven million is property tax. The rest is federal estate, grant, and aid, and those are the funds that you guys manage and process.
Okay. And, here it is, Krista, this is the compensation work that they've, they've been working on, page is after page. Every employee's listed on this, in the entire county. This is what we have to, I was looking at last night at my house, this is what we have to review before we make that decision on, two weeks before the budget. This is the work that, that Ally and Jessica, every single employee, looking at their current pay, their current education, their current years of service, and, and what it would do to a market value going forward. Some may be increased, some may not be, but it's, it's a start in the right direction. This is something we have to continue to discuss and then vote on.
And just to be clear, there are going to be a lot of people who are not going to be adjusted, okay? Not because we don't think you're valuable, but because it's, it's a, it's being used in connection with a policy we're putting into effect that says that if, we have to vote on this, but if you have one percent for each year of experience you have, you know, one or two percent, I forget what it is, for your bachelor's, or your associate's, or for your certification and so forth. So it is trying to correct the inequities that exist, and, and allow us also in the future, on future hiring, to be able to look at people when they come in and say, oh, you have five years' experience as a telecommunicator, or you have, you know, you have a bachelor's degree, or a master's in the planning. Now, obviously, it has to be relevant, right? If you're working in the planning department, and your bachelor is in, in food...
Tastries.
What do you think?
Tastries.
Tastries.
Underwater baskets.
Okay, but, so, so there...
Underwater basket leaving.
So there're going to be, there're going to be a number of people who are not adjusted on that one, okay? And then we're going to look into the market adjustment the following year. So, I just don't want to set expectations that everybody is getting adjusted, but there's a huge number. I mean, it's close to a hundred and eighty-two, I think, that are being adjusted. And this is going to help us, for example, with operators at the landfill. Well, we have an operator who comes to us with ten years' experience, or recently, we lost an operator with eleven years' experience, right? Under this policy, that person would have been adjusted. And so, we need to get that out.
Yep. So we're just about done with the first step.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, a motion for the adding the procurement and grant officer position.
I'll move to approve.
Second, all favors, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, four-oh. At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board, we convene the Commissioners' public meeting. We thank Commissioner Hor for joining us.
Yes.
Moving on to TDA actions.
I am seeking approval for the following TDA actions, for the prison reclassification for the nurse supervisor role from a pay grade ten to a pay grade twelve due to market adjustment.
Okay.
And then for the prison reclassification to Kim Foreman for pay grade twelve, and finally, the Commissioners adding a full-time procurement and grant officer and a pay grade eight.
Okay, I got a motion?
I'll move to approve those three actions. I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions about it? Kerry, none, all favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Kerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Moving on to action items, nine point one and nine point two. Maya?
Good morning again.
Good morning.
And this is to approve a proposal, what they can apply to Merrick House Incorporated. This is for the prison, they had an emergency repair before, due to a leaking refrigerant return. So, this is to get the repair done. I will note that the eighteen thousand six hundred dollar proposal that you have is just for the repair. Unfortunately, you know, due to the refrigerant and the fluctuating prices on that, we don't know where that's going to come in at. But, you know, ultimately, it doesn't, at the end of the day, it's covered by procurement code on the fact that this vendor is a CoStarz vendor, so it exempts us from doing any bidding requirements.
Okay, a motion?
I'll move to approve.
All favors, aye? So Kerry.
The next item I have before you is the Act thirteen agreements with West Branch Firemen's Association. It's for building upgrades being performed by MAMA and Kafka, and I believe we have some representatives here that would like to discuss their projects.
Absolutely, I'd like to hear from them. Who'd like to go first?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Gardner, the president of the capital organization here in Williamsport. We're located at seventeen fifty West Third Street. We are a training organization established in the late eighties to provide retail training to our local responders, including fire, EMS, and police. The building had an inspection done in two thousand nineteen, and the inspection identified problems in the building that resulted in us not to continue live-fire training. The building is utilized for live-fire training for, or certification of firefighters. We are a test site for the Pennsylvania State Fire Academy to test our local firefighters to a certification level at the national, a pro-board status. Unable to continue a burning level, we were in jeopardy of losing our testing procedures and testing site. The closest one that we have to us would be in Harrisburg or State College. And currently, we are traveling to State College to finish up our training for our certifications, which puts an additional burden on our responders to travel to State College or Harrisburg, when we have the ability to do it here in Lycoming County. So, so the project was to bring the building back up to the original status, be able to conduct live-fire training by fixing the second floor burn room, and the first floor burn room, and other components of the building that were in need of repairs. So, this was, funding was greatly appreciated from the Commissioners, it was approved, and we look forward to getting the building renovated and fixed to do back to the original status where it was purchased some time ago for our local fire chiefs that did it back in the early nineties.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Yes, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Dave Demick. I'm speaking on behalf of the MAMA organization, and also the County Fire Chiefs and West Branch Organization. Over the last ten years, we've realized the need to work at a county level to help bring about training in our area. We've completed a number of projects. One of the first ones was bringing county training hours to this area, which at the time had almost depleted. As of recent, we've been one of the top counties in the Bucks County system, providing the most hours of training to our first responders in their system, which is a great achievement for us. We've also worked to acquire another Act thirteen grant previous for training props that we use. These training props are available to all the firefighters throughout the county, free of charge. We've maintained them, and this is another project that we've worked on. We're currently working on another project with acquiring fire apparatus to help work, help with training at the various facilities throughout the county, at no charge to the fire companies. Finding fire equipment to do training throughout the area has been difficult at times, because most fire departments don't always have the equipment to give up to go to training sessions that are needed for two, three, four-hour training sessions. This is another project that we've come together and worked on as a team at the county level that will benefit both training grounds. I can tell you that the MAMA training facility is going to continue to work with the West Branch, and we're continuing to strive to provide free or very low-cost training to our county responders. On behalf of all of us, I want to thank the county Commissioners for your support. We are not able to do any of this stuff without your support, so on behalf of the West Branch and MAMA, thank you very much.
Dave, can I ask you a couple questions? Is it, first of all, I think all three of us think it's great that Kafka and MAMA are working together. And we had a meeting upstairs with all of you, and I think that that's something that we should all celebrate. Is it fair to say that MAMA primarily works with volunteer fire companies?
It's open to anybody.
It's open to anybody, it's primarily volunteer, right?
Probably because of its location.
Exactly.
It's a little more, it's difficult for the, the city of Williamsport to come out to our location when they're on duty.
Right.
However, their members have been able to take advantage of those training grounds when those classes are held.
Can you tell the public where the training grounds are at? Because I don't think a lot of people know.
So, the MAMA training grounds are located right off the Pensdale exit, it's off Interstate one eighty, between the interstate and the Lycoming Mall. So when you look off in the area of Sam's Club, that's where it's at. And you access it kind of through the area where you would go to the, I think it's the Muncie American Legion.
Yeah.
Right.
And it was formed many, many years ago. I think it actually came shortly after the West Branch. West Branch is actually the older, the oldest of all the organizations, and it was formed back in the nineteen thirties, back when those fire chiefs realized that we needed to come together and start to coordinate things, kind of at more of a county level. Things that benefit everybody, because it's too hard to do it just on a, on a fire department level, there's not enough people, there's not enough time. If we can share assets and resources, we're able to operate more efficiently.
Right. And that's, and these aren't trick questions, I'm, I'm trying to get the public to understand what's going on here, because it's very significant. It goes beyond simply the county appropriating some money from Act thirteen. I think there's been a conscious understanding among the firefighters in the county, that it's not going to happen tomorrow, but the long-term solution to the problem, to help the problem with the volunteers, is to find a way to use both the paid services in the third-class city, and the volunteers, and to see if we can't work together. I mean, I, I could be wrong on that, but I think that that's what's happening around the state and the country, and I think it's great that it looks like we're beginning to go in that direction here. Is that correct, or?
I think there's a lot of cooperation.
Yes.
You're starting to see more of a combination-type service come out. If you look to the north, there's just the recently formed Northern Lycoming Fire Rescue and EMS Service.
Right.
That's been formed, where they have two people on duty, they staff an ambulance, so they're able to handle emergency medical calls, but at the same time, they are firefighter, trained firefighters. So when they come off that ambulance at a working structure fire, or in a vehicle accident, they are able to operate. And we saw the benefits of that at the last structure fire that they had in Ralston, where we were able to, a combined effort between the paid, and the volunteers, we were able to get a quick hit on a fire that actually saved that house and kept that fire to a rim and content fire, which probably would not have happened prior to this. I know Loyalsoc and South Williamsport now have the SMART program, so what you're going to see is a need for these types of projects, because we're going to have a need for a workforce. And I can tell you, Commissioner, right now, that both organizations are finding it somewhat difficult to find people to meet the standards that we're looking for to fill these positions. So not only does this help the volunteers, and bring volunteer firefighters in and get them well-trained, but it's also going to help provide a workforce for what comes in the future.
And we've seen that statewide, where we had, you know, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, we had three hundred and sixty thousand volunteers, instead of under thirty thousand statewide. We just had a meeting with, with Matoresville and Plumkins Creek in Cascade Township that are doing something very similar, that South Williamsport and Loyalsoc is doing, that the Northern Alliance is doing. There's more of a regional approach where the departments are cooperating with each other to accomplish the mission, to make sure there's, there's service there with the volunteers that they have.
Absolutely, and you're even seeing discussion between those groups themselves, between, I can tell you for a fact that Northern Lycoming and the SMART system have been talking about how we can complement each other. So there's, there's even that discussion going on, where I think you'll see those systems expand and grow.
Well, I just want to thank you all, both the paid and the volunteers who are here, for, for your efforts to do this, to come together and to find a way to solve the problem for the public. And we'll certainly try to do our part in terms of whatever we can do to help out financially with Act thirteen and other programs.
Commissioner Maser made a comment about meeting with Cascade, Plumkins Creek, but what's critical is the fact that the township supervisors were there also. And, and I think they're starting to realize that it's not the county's responsibility, okay? It is each individual municipality and township, and they're coming to the table, they're offering money, they're offering solutions, and we're certainly going to help them. We believe that Act thirteen funds were a blessing, and we know, you know, we have to provide public safety, and, and your departments, it's, it's critical that you have the funds needed to, for education, training, and putting skilled people there in place. So, we're kind of excited, and for the old timers, you know, and I'm, you know, I'll tell you, you're old time, I shouldn't say that, but you're, you are setting a precedent in this community. You're going to leave a legacy that only the future will understand, okay? I, I think it's great, and I've worked with you many times, Dave, I think it's great what you're doing, but not only that, it's the time that you're putting in to make it happen. I mean, this is, this is at night, this is, you live, eat, drink, sleep, this is what your life is. It's a calling, and we can't thank you enough, so...
Yeah, and I want the public to remember, this, this is life-death situations. You know, you live in a rural area, and you don't have the volunteers to respond, and they have to come twenty minutes further. That can make the difference whether that person lives or not. And I shared there, David Matoresville in Plumkins Creek, and Cascade, a friend of mine, a very experienced hiker, and February twenty-eighth went out on a hike in a remote area, and due to the ice, had a tragic accident. If those three townships would not have worked together, she would have died. She would, she would not, she's a living miracle right now. And, and if they didn't work together as a unit to rescue her that day, there's no, no doubt she won't be alive. That's what you guys do, and you do it on a regular basis, you save lives. And, and we can't thank you enough.
By the way, just for the, for the public, the, there's a three hundred thousand dollar in this Act thirteen grant in this document, distributed a hundred fifty thousand to MAMA, a hundred fifty thousand to Kafka, to complete projects that are outlined in Exhibit B, and they're very specific descriptions of what will be done with the money, how MAMA will use it, and how Kafka will use it, so, just so people understand.
Does anybody else have anything they want to share or express? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion on action item nine point two?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions? Very none, all favors, aye?
Aye.
So Kerry.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, you know you do. Mike, Mike, hey, Mike, you do.
If you would, real quick, Chief. Commissioners, I would like, real quick, to thank the city of Williamsport, Chief Unxton, Deputy Chief Lucas, and platoon chiefs, and Mike Gardner was one of my fire instructors, and thank you very much for the response you give to the transfer station, all of you, night and day, so they have responded to some ugly calls with people falling, and other accidents at the transfer station with fire and stuff. So thank you very much on behalf of RMS, we appreciate it. Thank you.
We do have two important Commissioner comments, if you want to stick around, if you have time, or you read it out in the paper.
I have to say, Jason was my best student, too.
Sounds like a paid endorsement.
Your job, Tom.
I have a question.
Yeah, Tom.
I just wanted to, is there a junior firefighter program?
Nice.
It's usually relative to each department, because that's such a, such a local issue. As example, I'll speak as Deputy Chief of Matoresville, we used to have the Boy Scouts in our Explorer Program, that, the Boy Scouts have actually declined a little bit, so now, yes, we, as Matoresville, we do have a junior program, but it's a very local issue. Unfortunately, the city being a paid career department, they can't have that, but what we, they do reach out during public, during fire prevention league, you know, the students aren't made aware of everything, they do provide those programs and other community programs. Joe, what's the Lycoming?
I'm directed, oh, active, Chief Hutchins, comments, yeah, every department is regulated highly by the Department of Labor. There's certain things junior members can do and can't, factors legislation to move that along. A lot of us older junior members know that we kind of skirted those rules in our younger days, but it's, they're very serious rules. But what we've done with City of Williamsport has also helped with, there's an emergency services program at Williamsport area school district that has young people going, starting when they're freshmen now, and going through, and not all of them come through, not all of them want to do, this is one of those things, it's not like the Rotary Club or something, not everybody does, you either do this, or you don't do this. But some of them, we have, we were doing testing for them last year in their final exams, and the one gentleman donned his protective equipment so well that one of the city platoon chiefs looked at him and goes, you know, we test every two years, right? You know, like, you, you need to test, you need to come try out for this. So, yes, the junior member program is alive and well, but it's like everything else, trying to get the, the younger people active and involved is a challenge.
And for your, and for your, I want to add, too, for your local fire halls, the price of equipment is unreal.
And just?
It continues to rise, so if you can support, we all like to eat, if you can support your local fire companies, the fundraisers they do, the barbecues, the chicken barbecues, the fish fries are awesome. If you can, if you can, you know, if you're driving by, stop, that's a way to support them.
You know, to echo that, you can become, you can be, join, become a member, right? You can, it's, I think Hepburn Township, it's like $82 a year or something we pay as a household, as a contribution, right? So, you know, people go out and spend money on cell phones, they spend it on sneakers, they spend it on McDonald's. Sit down, call your local volunteer fire company and say, you know, how much is it to be, to be a member and, and make your contribution, because that adds up, too. If you have 8,000 residents, you know, and you're collecting 80 bucks a person, it helps pay for training and other things, so.
Okay, thank you. Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
9.3, this is a one-year extension with Mahan Tango Enterprises. Mahan Tango is the only tire recycling that we have in bid. This will probably be the last extension for tire recycling, and we will, we will be doing this one-year extension with no increased cost or anything, but we provide recycling for car tires and large truck tires.
Okay, a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors aye?
Aye.
So carried.
Second, 9.4 is an improvement, approved amendment to the agreement of Croft Chemical Company. This is a two-year extension and no price increases, except for the shipping, there will now be a $25 per drum shipping fee. So, Croft is the company that we buy all of our leachate chemicals that we use to treat leachate lines, deodorizer, the neutralizer that we put through the trailers, and so forth. So, that is one of our heavily budgeted items each year, but no increase for two years is a good thing, we just have to pay for shipping now.
Okay, a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
And part of that as well, 9.5 is an equipment rental agreement with Croft Chemical. So, we get another two-year extension with the, with Croft Chemical. We get to use their trailers, as long as we're using their, their chemicals, it's for their trailers, and they allow us to use their trailers to distribute and push the, the neutralizer throughout that white plate system you see.
Okay. A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors aye?
Aye.
So carried.
9.6 is a continuation, I was before you, a month ago, Commissioners. This is an amendment to the agreement with the Federal Bureau of Prisons that we do, that we provide electricity. This is a 60-day extension. Before, I was before you with a 30-day extension, hoping that our tenure contract would be through the Federal Bureau of Prisons system, ready for your approval, and it's not yet. So, I'm now going to go to a 60-day extension, hoping that by, within the next 60 days, I can be before you for a tenure extension.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
And lastly, then goes with that is 9.7, this is the master power purchase and sale agreement that we have with Energy Power Partners that actually runs the Cogen plant for us, and this, too, is a 60-day extension.
A motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors aye?
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you, Sharon.
Appreciate it. Jenny.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a vote to approve submission of the 2022 Fair Grant Application to PHFA in the amount of $1 million, and it is for 10 projects this year that go to support affordable housing. And I'm just going to quickly review the 10 projects. The first one is American Rescue Workers, it's the Rental Assistance Program, and we will be submitting for $100,000. The second is the Asbury Foundation for the Albright Life Rental Assistance Program, $48,000. Then the Greater Habitat for Humanity Scott Street Parcel for $25,000. Then Habitat for Humanity's Home Preservation Program for $25,000. Lycoming County, Clinton County Joiner Board, their interim housing program for $52,000. STEPS Supportive Housing Program for $200,000. STEPS Regional Homes in Need Program for $200,000. STEPS Urgent Need Home Repair Program for $50,000. Transitional Living Centers Master Leasing Program for $200,000. And finally, YWCA's Liberty House Program for $100,000. And grant applications are due November 18.
Okay, can I motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we're going to have to take these at least individually. I need to recuse from the second one, because that's a program that we are involved with in my business, the Asbury Foundation.
Okay, can we take them separately, Jim?
Oh, sure.
Or you can take all of them.
I'll make a motion, yeah.
Yeah.
They can.
Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve all of them, except the Asbury Foundation.
I'll second that motion.
All favors aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the Asbury Foundation.
I'll second. All favors aye?
Aye.
Opposed or recused?
I, Mr. Solicitor, is the correct term recused?
Abstain.
Abstain?
I don't think it's abstain, I think it's...
My term is abstain, correct, sir.
Oh, thank you, okay.
But please don't argue that.
I just want to make a comment on all of these.
Sure.
I think it's great, Jenny, the job you've done in finding a cross-section of hitting our housing needs from various points, you know, whether it's the American Rescue Workers, where people who are very struggling at one end of the economic scale, the Asbury Foundation helps seniors, which we've not done in the past.
It's new this year.
It's new this year. The Habitat for Humanity, the Memorial Home Scott Street Parcel. I, I like to say that Lycoming Habitat for Humanity is the ultimate step in the housing, getting back into housing, right? You may start in one of these programs that assisted you begin working, you begin to get stabilized, and eventually you get into a home, right? The Joiner, folks with MHID issues, right? STEPS Supportive Housing, Regional Homes in Need, that's the, all of these, Urgent Home, Urgent Home is for our folks who have a crisis, right? Transitional Living Centers, the Master Leasing, getting people back on their feet, and of course, the YW Liberty House. So, I really compliment you on that. You, it shows your experience here in the county in understanding the housing problem.
Yeah, and we have good community partners, too, so it's a very wide range of programs this year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jim.
9.9, Shannon.
Okay, Commissioners, as you know, the deadline for the RACP, business plans are due November 6. DeSalvo's needs a second extension for their project. They're finalizing their, their, their business plan, but they need to continue to get some complete design revisions and engineering estimates for their project. So, the $1 million that the state had awarded them through RACP, they're requesting an extension until April, when they'll be able to put their business plan in.
Okay.
And this is not county funds. This is entirely, they, they applied with our blessing, but this is all state funds.
And it's pass-through?
Yeah, it's pass-through. They're handling all of the administration, all of that through, through their consultant.
Okay. Motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors aye?
Aye.
So carried.
And I just wanted to mention, John and I just met with Hutch this morning to talk about radios and our ARPA funds, and we're, we're working together to come up with an idea of a way to do grants. Unfortunately, Maya left, so we'll let her know that we'll be giving her more business.
Please. All the business.
We'll give, we'll give her more business, because we're going to try and match the ARPA funds with some grants, so.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Last, 9.10, John.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Should let people know who you are.
All right. John Lavelle, Deputy Director for the Lycoming County Planning Department. Pending the Commissioner's approval today, the county's going to make its first award of the Housing Starts Initiative Program to support the Woodland Heights Development, which is within the City of Williamsport in the amount of $34,696. And this is a award that's actually contingent on a fully executed agreement with the company.
Yeah, this is exciting, because as we discussed ARPA monies, and we heard from developers and realtors in the area, we were informed something that was taking place nationally that's also going on here was a housing shortage, whereas normally there's 600 houses on the market, there's 750 houses on the market in Lycoming County, it was down in the 150 range. And so, we, we spoke amongst ourselves, we voted on, we realized ARPA money's going to be used, we did come out of those discussions, was a program that was developed, the Housing Starts Initiative, which would be $2 million this year, and $2 million next year to try to address the housing needs in our area. We had several applicants apply to that, that opened up October 1, and this is the first reward, that reward that will be given out underneath those guidelines.
I can, you...
Absolutely.
So, this is projectively undertaken by the principals of T. Ross Brothers, who have a historically proven track record for residential development in the area. Specifically, the grant funds are going to be put towards sewer and water tap fees. The proposal is for 20 town home units on the Wisteria Lane Development in the West End. And so, essentially, this is a shovel-ready project. All permits and approvals have already been acquired, so they're ready to, they're ready to go. And best part here is, at full build-out, the county's going to see a return on its investment within two years, and just from transfer fees alone at the sale of the properties, it'll almost double the grant award, $60,000 in transfer fees after you sell 20 units.
So, explain to the public, when you say a return on investment in two years, you're talking about the amount of property tax and the transfer tax?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, go and explain that to the public.
So, so, the grant award here is, again, it's $34,000. I believe, I didn't write it down specifically, but I believe in, in property, real estate tax, to the county itself, not including school taxes or city taxes, that's $20,000 a year, coming back into the, into the county tax rolls. And then, the, the transfer tax, which is paid upon closing of a property, for 20 units, that would be $60,000. So, so, a pretty good return on, on an initial grant of a little bit more than $30,000.
It's a very modest grant, and...
Investment.
Investment. I, I think it's important for the public to understand, you know, the old expression, how do you eat an elephant? How do we deal with the problem of taxes rising and the problem of, of depopulation? Well, you got to do an inch by inch, and it's really, you know, slugging it out, 20 units here, 20 units there, and then some bigger things that we're going to talk about today also. But it's a significant first step in trying to build housing that will attract people from outside the community. Unfortunately, a lot of our housing stock is over 100 years old, and that's great, if you happen to like a house that's 100 years old. But if you're coming from a state like Florida or Texas or wherever, where a lot of the housing's relatively new, and you're looking for new housing, it's harder to find that. So, this is part of it, and also, the income bracket this is targeted to is what we would probably say middle-income people, right? On these houses. And so, so the public also benefits for, because obviously, those costs would have been passed on to the public, right?
Yes.
The costs that the developer has. So, when we do this, we're both building our tax base, and we're also trying to attract people to the community and help people get into homes by, by lowering the, the cost.
You're right, you're addressing two issues. You're attacking the housing crisis, at the same time, you're increasing your tax revenue by growing your tax base, by putting the tax base on current residents, you're growing that tax base.
Yeah, that's our goal, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, grow that tax base. Okay.
It's how you eat an elephant.
You know they're in danger.
I know.
Okay.
A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors aye?
Aye.
John, is there anything else?
Just, just to add that we will be in coordination with the Commissioners, reaching out to the other applicants, to set up meetings, basically interviews, to, to review their, their submissions.
Thanks, John, for your efforts.
Hey. Thank you.
Commissioners, I forgot to say, I need this letter for DeSalvo today, because it's due.
Okay, I'll sign right after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner, comment?
So, I have two things. The second will be an update on the Coroner, but the first thing I'd like to address is, the Lycoming Mall has been a staple in our community for the past 40 years. We have witnessed a once vibrant and robust mall that was heavily utilized in its steady decline over the past decade. Over the years, we have witnessed an economic decline that added to the unemployment and taxes being reduced due to appeals. Many anchor stores and businesses within the mall have left. This past year, we saw a $79,000 reduction in taxes after an appeal. Currently, they have a handful, currently, there's a handful of stores that are still open at the mall. The mall is one subject that many in this community discuss on a regular basis, with the hope that prosperity will shine from the other side of the arch that sits at the entrance. It sits now in the eastern end of the county, in our growth corridor, as a sad, empty shell of what once was a great location for shopping, families, and fun. It reminds me of downtown Williamsport 15 years ago, that had made storefronts empty and resemble a ghost town. Through a great deal of hard work by several in, in our community and a shared vision, they have brought downtown Williamsport back, and it continues to grow with an exciting future that once was cast off as a town of yesteryear. Recently, the Lycoming County Chamber scheduled a meeting with the Commissioners and advised us that a group of developers that shared their vision of the restoration of the Lycoming Mall. We met with the Chamber and the developer to hear that exciting news that would apply a positive impact in the middle of the addition, in the middle of the addition of the recently constructed Geisner Medical Center and the current growth of the Lycoming Cross, Crossings. The Board of Commissioners believe that the acquisition of the mall by these developers will bring new life, with employment opportunities, possible housing, and increased tax revenue for the county. The county will be exploring a five-year loan at 3% interest. The developers will be a third of the collateral into the agreement, along with a local bank. And the local bank in the county will be lending equal amounts of the two-thirds. The county's portion will be a $5 million loan for a five-year period at 3% interest. The monies will come from the Act 13 Fund. As the Commissioners weigh this decision, we want to emphasize that this is a loan and not a grant. We have received feedback that the developers have also met with local state officials, who are very favorable and express positive opinions on this project, and would help boost it in Lycoming County. They are also exploring funding options that the state may be granting. This is an investment in the growth corridor of the county that has the potential to pay dividends and rewards for a generation or more. The mall adds a quality-of-life aspect to our community. Basic necessities such as shopping can be accomplished locally without having... Basic necessities such as shopping can be accomplished locally without having to travel. The prices of gas is making that more difficult for the majority of us. The current decline of tax revenue is a burden that each resident shares when a tax appeal is won. The difference in reduced tax revenue is less money available to provide services. The local bank Board of Directors will be meeting in mid-November to discuss their approval for their portion of the loan. The county and the bank will share joint lien holders on the loan as co-equal first lien holders. This information is being presented today to inform the public that we would like and invite feedback prior to us placing this on a future agenda for a vote. It's important, as we utilize public monies on all county matters, that we engage with the public for respectful and important dialogue before those decisions are reached. At this time, I would ask if my two colleagues would like to make a statement, followed by Jason Fink of the Chamber, who's the president, who has joined us in this meeting this morning. Would either Commissioner like to make a statement?
Sure. Just one statement because you read about everything there. So, but under Act thirteen money, okay? And understand the importance of what this natural gas industry has given to not only our community, but, you know, New York, Pennsylvania, Ohio, West Virginia. It's really important that we support this industry, not overburden it. And trust me, there's a number of areas, like even in eastern Ohio, in western Pennsylvania, where the growth of that industry is going to, you know, really pick up. We're looking at Act thirteen and the drilling picking up in the next year, year and a half. The country's going to need this energy to at least stabilize the increase. But I also wanna, you know, Commissioner Merritt, we've done many occasions emphasize the fact that, you know, our industry, or Pennsylvania's tax on the industry is, although it's nice to have, it's very low in some regards, and we want to be able to protect some of that money that we use from them. It's very difficult to understand how the industry works, but imagine that it's coming from our state, it's underneath our feet, and we have to be able to meet the demands not only of our state, but of the world. And we, as Pennsylvania, should benefit from that.
So, you know, I hope that the county taxpayers will understand that we are working very hard to protect that, their tax dollars. This is five million dollars, it's Act thirteen money, but it's their money. And the Commissioner mentioned two ways that are very significant. The first way is that first lien position on the property. Typically, if you go to buy your house, the bank is in the first lien position. And even if you have a second mortgage, they're in second lien. And what that means is that second lien cannot foreclose if first lien is there and only recovers what's left after first lien recovers. Well, we fought very, or we proposed and said very strongly that we wanted to be in first lien position with the bank. And that's part of the deal. So, this is not decided, but I want the taxpayers to understand that we've worked very hard to protect their money. So, that's one thing. And the other thing that the Commissioner mentioned, which is very important, the total amount involved here is fifteen million dollars, split three ways. Five from the county, five from the bank, and five from the purchasers. And we share a personal guarantee with the bank on five million dollars, two and a half million for the county and two and a half million for the bank. That means that if this project does not come to fruition, we can, to recover the money, go after the personal assets of the people involved. Also, something that any time you walk into a bank to do a business deal, you sign a personal guarantee unless you happen to be an incredibly well-capitalized business that is larger than most of the businesses here, most of our small businesses. This is gonna protect the taxpayers also. The three percent that Commissioner Metzger mentioned results in the county bringing seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars into our Act thirteen over the five years. That's what the three percent is. So, again, we look for the public's interest input on this. But the positive thing about it is, it's working to try to move that property from a series of half-empty concrete structures that will, over time, deteriorate and eventually become more of a liability than they are, you know, in their current condition. To move it from that to something which gets into the conversation we had earlier about increasing our tax base and repopulating the county. If we, and the developers involved have a track record of doing good, creative, forward-looking things. So, imagine you're driving to Virginia and you see off the highway like a, I don't wanna call it a planned unit development, but something where there's houses and shopping and other things going on. It would be exciting, it would be exciting and attracting people. So, it's unusual, I don't know, Commissioner Muster, you've been here for almost twelve years now, have we ever loaned that amount of money to anybody?
No. But I'd like to add this, if there is gonna be that kind of growth, that building, that I don't think anywhere in the agreement states the use of local businesses. But I would hope that the developers consider using our local businesses, our local workforce if they can.
Well, that's a good point, that's a good point. And just to be clear, we don't have a document in front of us when you mention an agreement. We don't have any document, so...
This is for informational purposes.
This is for informational purposes. This is information that we've tried to work out.
Yeah, we want the public to know about it.
Right. But we don't, so we don't do it flippantly.
No.
We don't do it flippantly, but we do do it with the hope that we're beginning to plant a seed to build the future and repopulate the county, bring people to the county. That's gotta be our mantra, that has to be something we think about every day. What are we doing to bring people to the county? I know Mr. Fink thinks about it, the three of us think about it, we all have to begin to think about it.
And I think anyone...
Because we're losing population, right?
You're right. I think anyone who drives by that mall currently gets a sick feeling in their stomach, to be honest. And what could be possibly there could be huge and bring population to this county and visitors like it once was. And these developers have that track record. In our state, they've done that, in other communities.
Right.
So, at this time, I invite Jason Fink to come forward and address this matter.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just wanna provide some background as to why we, first of all, came to the Commissioners with the request. For those who may not be aware of DCD programming, there is a program called Business in Our Sites. It's a program that is structured for development projects like this that is primarily a loan pool. Unfortunately, the legislature has not been investing in that program, and they are fully subscribed at this time, being in a position where they've given all their loan programs, all their loan proceeds out for projects. And unfortunately, the earliest that they would be in a position to consider any loans for projects will be, what they've said to us at DCD is next fall. The contract that the buyers have right now with the current mall owner, they need to close by the end of this year. Actually, it's a little bit earlier than this year, but no later than this year. So, obviously, from the perspective of being in a position to wait for that program to reopen, they were not in that position. That is why we turned to the Commissioners to see if there was a way that we could creatively replicate what that program does, with the understanding that it was a loan request, it was not a grant request, to be able to assist them in being able to acquire the property. The developers are already moving forward in other aspects of being able to tap into existing programs that they could access, to be able to work towards their vision in redeveloping the mall property. They've already submitted for a PennDOT multimodal grant to be able to assist them with some of the roads. If you've been down at the mall, you know how bad those roads are right now. And also, some of the things that they need to be able to do in being able to put into effect their plan for the mall redevelopment. The other thing that they've gone after is they have made a request, the RACP program, which was recently opened, they've got a request into the state for that. Both of these grants, they anticipate hearing in the coming months. We understand the RACP grant awards could be announced in the coming weeks, so they're anxiously waiting to see what other support they would be able to access for this. You did note that it is a development group that has some ties to Pennsylvania. Actually, there are three partners in this group, the group is called Fanvest. One of them actually lives in Muncie, in the borough of Muncie, they're a Muncie borough resident. The other two live over in the Santa County area. So, from that aspect of it, they have a commitment to the community. This development group, partners involved with it have been involved in other developments here in our county. They've, most recently, they've done a couple of commercial developments that are notable along the Golden Strip. One is the Chipotle, and the other is the Texas Roadhouse, but they've also been involved in other projects here in the county, both industrial-wise and commercial ventures. So, we feel very comfortable, that's why we felt comfortable in being able to bring them to you. We, you know, know our name is out there as well when we bring these projects forward, embedded them pretty heavily, and had actually worked with them on other projects, so it was pretty easy from our end of it. And being able to ask you to look at this, and again, as we stress, this is a loan and pretty much replicates exactly what the terms of that program that the state has of the Business in Our Sites. Your interest rate is, and I will note, your interest rate's actually a point higher than what the Business in Our Sites program has right now. It's set at two percent for counties like ours, they do have a three percent level, but those are for counties with a greater unemployment rate from that side of it. So, we're in a good position from that aspect of it, and being able to see that you're doing better than what the Business in Our Sites program, it is a five-year loan now, which is how they structured that program. So, we appreciate the county stepping in and being able to consider this. The bank is in their process right now, I was just with the banker earlier this morning, and got an update from them, they're in the process right now of reviewing all the things that they need to, to be able to present this to their loan committee, and then also, once that gets approved, it'll go to their full board for a decision on that. But they, as noted, they do anticipate having that done here mid-month, later this month, we do have some holidays coming up and stuff that may impact that. But their goal is to have it done no later than the end of this month. And shortly thereafter, I would expect that the Commissioners would then be asked to vote on the documents. And I know those loan documents are in the process right now of being developed as well. So...
Two points, Mr. Fink. One is that, you know, we outlined how the county tax dollars are being protected with the first lien position and the personal guarantee. The underwriting is being done by the bank, right?
Yes.
So, the bank is going in and examining all the documents that they do when they make a loan to a business, they examine cash flow, they examine assets, they examine everything, right? They do credit reports. And we will get reports on that, the same reports that are given to the board, to be able to review. But that's a positive for us because we're not in a position to do underwriting, the kind of detailed analysis you need to do to make a decision on the validity of a loan. Just so the public understands, you know, whenever you start a project, everything looks great, and everyone is hopeful that it's gonna work out. Well, sometimes things don't work out, and the important thing is to always have an exit plan at the end, right? Well, that's where the first lien position and the personal guarantee are the exit plan to protect the public. Because our primary responsibility, in addition to economic development, is to make sure that we protect the public's money. What do I mean by that? Well, by, you know, if the purchase price of the mall is fifteen, and for some reason this goes south, the bank and the county have ten million dollars there, we immediately have first lien position, the two of us together. So, we take control of the property, which means that we've now acquired the property for ten million dollars. Nobody wants this to happen, and, but you always look for what is gonna happen, right? And then in addition to that, we share a five-million-dollar personal guarantee, which means that the bank and the county could recover five million in personal assets from the developers, leaving us essentially with five million dollars that we have to figure out how to move the mall for five million. I don't think any of that's gonna happen, I think this is gonna be successful. I think the three of us are thrilled that the bank is, and the county, and the developers are working together to try to do this. The second point I wanted to ask you, how much are we leveraging, do you think, between the RCAP and the PennDOT multimodal and the other grants?
Well, I will tell you, I mean, I know what their ask was for the RACP grant, that was an eight-million-dollar request, they're not gonna get an eight-million-dollar award, let's be honest, from that aspect of it. But, you know, that's what they put in. However, you know, in terms of the PennDOT multimodal, I believe it was a two-million-dollar grant request. And all of these are competitive, so that's why I state, you know, you put in what you really would love to see, with the understanding that you're not gonna get everything.
I think in that regard, it's important for the public to understand that this isn't gonna happen overnight.
Correct, this is not...
This is gonna be a five-year project minimum.
You'll see it, you'll see it in phases.
Exactly. But the point of that is...
You talked about existing buildings that are down there that they can bring, because they have many connections with numerous franchises and businesses, that there are some that there are already discussions with, they expressed to us, that they can bring into those buildings immediately in a lease, where others are gonna have to take a look at and, you know, whether it's demolition and new construction. So, it's a multi-phase process.
Right. But what that also does is it gives us multiple chances to get state grants.
Yeah.
Whether it's future PennDOT multimodal, or whether it's leveraging with future RCAP grants. So, it gives us a way, they won't, you know, PennDOT's not gonna go dump money just because you wanna fix a road.
Correct.
If there isn't some connection to some economic development with it. So, that's exciting also. It's like planting a seed.
I think the other key aspect of it is, and they're not represented here today, but Muncie Township has experienced a burden as well on this, and we advise them about the fact that there was a potential for this to take place. They have been very supportive as well. They're not in a position to participate in this type of venture, but they have seen the decline as well. We, it's been well noted that the current owner is very derelict in making payments for their public services that they do receive there. And from that aspect of it, I think that, you know, the township is anxious to see a different owner sitting there that would be able to repurpose this property. It may or may not end up being commercial in the way that we see the mall sitting there right now. I mean, because this is going to be, it's gonna be a different ownership, and it's a different time. I mean, you know, malls were big at a certain point for communities of our size. There are still successful malls that are operating in much larger urbanized areas, but malls are being transfigured and transformed right now. Our mall hasn't, unfortunately, and we, it's good to see that we have a developer that is willing to take on this project and put the time and sweat equity, because there's gonna be a lot of work on their part to take on a project. It's about a hundred and thirty-five roughly acres with about a seven-to-eight-hundred-thousand square foot building sitting on it, and it's an aged building.
Yeah. You know, another point that you raised about that is that, Lycoming County Water and Sewer Authority, if this gets developed and we get water usage up and sewer usage up, it helps us to pay for that infrastructure, so...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It is exciting, and.
Very exciting.
I think, I, we're not patent, I think it's worth noting that the Commissioners are going out doing this because, I mean, as you said, it's Muncie, Muncie has the situation, right?
Yeah, well, it's Muncie that has the situation, and I appreciate the fact that it is not a publicly owned structure.
Exactly.
But it is a very public structure, and the activity has taken place over the decades and unfortunately declined. It's a highly visible property with the rerouting of fifteen and the traffic coming up on one eighty now that we're seeing already with the throughway. You know, this is a very highly visible property, and I'll be honest with you, the concerns I had is the fact that nobody was going to take this project on, it was going to sit there under the current ownership, and we were going to continue to see the decline that was in place and not really be able to project because of, you know, what was taking place. So, I think it's a prudent investment by the county, and the way that you're doing it, in doing it in a structure of a loan, you're going to get your money back, and hopefully you're also going to see increased tax activity out of it. You know, there's other developments that are taking place down there. Geisinger just opened up a brand-new hospital, looking at some of the other activities that are taking place there. You've got, you've got the PA Gaming with Mealy Entertainment there. Those are investments that are being made in and around it, and this will bolster that aspect of it as well. So, as you noted earlier, it's a growth corridor as well, and being able to see that the county is putting the resources into that growth corridor in a very wise manner, because, again, I go back to, this is a loan, you are going to get your money back.
Right.
With a little bit more money, actually.
Absolutely.
So, tell us what you think, public.
Yeah, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay. The other issue I'd like to discuss is, as you're aware, we had a meeting last week with the Coroner. We continue to look at options, three options we're going to be exploring at this point. As I reached out to the Airport Authority, I reached out to the Chairman of the Airport Authority after a meeting last week to ask them if they would have a discussion, the Airport Authority would have a discussion with the three Commissioners about possibly relocating the Coroner down on their property. And if you look at the corners around the state, the Coroner in Berks County is located on airport property, and also other counties, the Coroner is located near airports. So, that would be one option. Option two is we would continue discussions, reach back out to the hospital to see if something can be worked out maybe on another parcel up there at the hospital, and have those discussions with the hospital, see if they would entertain that. And then the third would be having discussions with a landowner up in the Newbury section of Williamsport, just off of Fourth Street, across the bridge, and we would reach out to that developer to possibly put the location there. So, those are, we're not going to put our eggs all in one basket, we're going to try to have discussions with all three to see what the best option is. But we are moving forward on this and to try to get this done in a timely fashion. It's been way too long, we all agree, it needs to get done. And I discussed these options last night with the Coroner on the phone, and he's receptive to having the discussions. He'll be included in those meetings as we move forward. Okay, anything else from the other two Commissioners? Okay, anything from our public? Again, Tom, while you're coming up, I want to thank the gentlemen for being here today and for doing what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Tom.
Morning. I missed my comment last week. There's a little, you know, activity going, I stood up, you didn't see me.
I'm sorry, I missed you.
Yeah. Go ahead, say something.
Go ahead.
Okay. Do I get double timed tonight, then? And I missed a school board meeting because my, my information was messed up, I didn't see it until after I got back home, because I usually go over to the middle school and then realized it was at the high school. I thought, I don't know if they were still giving a time, and then I dropped out at one eight.
Yeah, last one.
Yeah. I'm usually there bothering them too, so, you know, someone's got to do it, I guess. Here's a Psalm, Psalm twelve eight says, wickedness, when the wicked strut a bale on every side is when the vileness is exalted among the sons of men. And that's what we're seeing, we're seeing wickedness just everywhere, and it's just struttiness, and mainly because we kick God out of our society and out of our government. And that's because, I'll keep saying, you know, our country's founded on the Christian ethic, the Bible, the main founding document, and when you kick him out of government and the churches don't say anything, you take prayer out of the schools, these are the results that we get. And we're glorifying drag, you know, for kids, it's all a story, and it wasn't their story, it came from the Associated Press, but I think that Associated Press is one of the worst organizations this country has as far as news and information, because most of it's skewed and it's trash. But they're trying to glorify something that shouldn't be for kids at all, and it's a, God definitely speaks against that type of activity, and it's not, once again, not to attack the people, because those people are being used, being used by this LGBTQ community for profit and to get into the schools for the transgender movement and things, and they silence, they purposely silence the gays against grooming and the transgenders against grooming. So, a lot of honest people in those movements, I might not agree with what their decisions, but there's some people that really went through these, but they're adults, you know, they're not childish, they're not children, they're not trying to push children, but this whole thing is. And that's why, you know, if we don't start honoring God, we're not going to see prosperity. It's going to keep getting sucked up. That's why we have the Bible, and Bible shows that when a country that was honored to God and given to God, when they turn their back on them, it gets worse. Jonathan Con, he's a Christian, he's a Jew rabbi, Messianic Jew, so his preaching, he goes into a lot of the prophecies and how, and just how God judged Israel at the time and how those things are coming right on our country, and have been especially since nine one one. And since the country hasn't repented, we're just seeing more of this stuff going on. So, I just encourage people to really think when they vote again, to see what candidates really stand for godly principles and what don't. You know, who don't? Who doesn't? My English is messed up. But, you know, it's, I mean, it's just important, because no one's going to be perfect, but we want the godly principles to come through. It's not about Christian nationalism, it's not about Trump, it's about who's the best candidate in the moment, and sadly, we have a party system, a two-voted party system, because third parties just aren't going to win unless they're highly popular and have a lot of push behind them. So, you do a lot of times have to go for the lesser of two evils, but the quick key is to stay on their butts when they get, when they do get elected. I've got to say, I'm very disappointed with Gene Yaw and Jeff Whelan with a lot of their inactivity for some things. And so, when we have that push to remove God out of things, you're also removing the foundation of our constitution, and our constitution has been being shredded before eyes for a long time. And one big area is when everything is taken to a court case, the courts aren't supposed to override legislation. That's not their job, and they're not allowed to say, they have an opinion on something that they think it's unconstitutional, but we're not supposed to be ruled by one man or a panel of people. That's not, that's not our government. Why would you have a constitution if that's how it's supposed to be? And just, we'll just do what the judge says. And that's why we have problems like when the Department of State's pushing on their will on this county, on certain things with the election process, now with no book verification for dates or even signature verification. That's not, that's not, our legislators are supposed to do that. So, they can have an opinion, they can say, well, you can look at this, but it's our will. That's how, that's, it's our, that's why we elect people to write these laws, and they're not doing what we want them to do, we get them out, and we got to hold their feet to the fire. So, I just, I just hope we can really think about what we're doing. And one last thing, my heart goes out to the Huertas, the fellow that died from Williamsport last week. And it's a really sad thing, I really don't know why, what happened, he was a senior there at high school and.
Oh, the student you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. A sad situation, seemed like a really good kid.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other public comment this time? Okay, here now we've completed our agenda, our next meeting will be Thursday, November tenth.